Stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the June 14th or June 13th Oshkosh Facility Study Workshop. City Manager or Chief, would you like to begin?
I'm going to turn it right over to Chief Stanley to introduce our guest.
It's been a real pleasure to work with Short Elliott Hendrickson or S E H on this project. That's great work and we're very excited to have him present to you tonight. So our lead person we've worked with is Trevor Frank. I'll put him in here himself and tell you about his background and get right to the main event.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll speak loudly, I'm not yelling at anyone here, just trying to get over the fan noise here. I am Trevor Frank, I'm an architect with Short Elliott Hendrickson. I office out of our Appleton location. Been an architect for about 30 years, 17 of those years with S E H. In the last 12 years, really laser focused on fire and EMS work, fire station design, police station and EMS design. So I'm happy to be here, thank you. I'm going to walk you through basically a time lapse of when we started almost a year ago until where we are today. We'll go through some recommendations, observations, and some of the challenges that we've encountered throughout the study process. So the S E H representatives from Short Elliott Hendrickson or myself as a principal and project manager, Mark Zavikovitz, who helped us with programming and CAD support. Mark's also a paid-on called firefighter in the city of Germantown. And then Chuck Leipzig. Chuck is a retired fire chief from the city of Kenosha at 36 years and as a fire chief and really helps us in terms of operations planning, looking at big picture things when the chiefs talk about long-range planning for their departments. And then obviously the OFD representatives, that we couldn't have done any of this without, they were really, really helpful through the process. It was Chief Stanley, Assistant Chief Zeimer, Assistant Chief Bending, and then Mary Jo was the glue that held it all together. I want to talk a little bit about the detailed, specific scope of work. So the proposal and the contract we signed with the city of Oshkosh asked us to narrow the focus of facility needs to just six Oshkosh fire stations. The city, obviously, it's the only operating facility within the city that's occupied 24/7/365. And I'll explain why that is important in the upcoming slides, but as you can well imagine, those buildings don't get a rest, right? There's always people in them, there's always activity. There were a lot of dynamics and moving parts to this study and the recommendations that came out of it. You'll hear accounts of us working with Winnebago County, neighboring communities, community development, and other departments. Also, just for the record too, is to understand that the city obviously has additional facility needs and that the fire department is just one of those city departments, but that was the department we were hired to study and that's why we'll be so fire department-centric today. It started back in November. We had a kickoff meeting, we developed the scope and schedule, we discussed operations and staffing, facility challenges. Then we got to roll up our sleeves and tour all six of the fire station facilities owned by the city of Oshkosh throughout the city. We interviewed the fire personnel and staff about current operations, conditions, some of their challenges, some of the observations, and discussed where fire service is going here in the future. We talked about public safety station features and trending developments within the fire service industry, and I'll touch on a few of those here as we walk through the presentation tonight. We also reviewed available sites for the development of Station 16, Fire Station 16, that's the one on the west side over by the water tower near Fleet Farm. We worked with the department staff to develop space needs and program, which was a pretty heavy lift when you're talking about programming the needs for six different stations. We met with the town of Algoma. Their representatives were brought up to date on study scope and progress. We wanted to let them know what's going on on the Oshkosh side of the fence in terms of long-term planning for not only Station 16, but developments of the city west. We also met with Oshkosh Community Development Representatives, Kelly and her team, to discuss growth trends and population projections, very helpful in our long-range planning. As we entered January, we reviewed scope and programs with department representatives. We developed heat mapping, and I'll go through a couple of those examples to show you what the value is to developing those heat maps. Our operations planner Chuck Leipzig, who I mentioned, retired Kenosha Fire Chief, met with Chief Stanley to discuss the operations and future growth of the department. We developed a matrix for annual station improvements as part of a capital budget. And in March, we updated those heat maps for Station 16 location sighting, and then we went back out to Algoma and revisited with them to present the findings of that heat mapping. In April, we issued the draft report to the Oshkosh Fire Department, and then most recently had made a report of findings to department representatives prior to our presentation here today to U N Council. I want to talk a little bit about some of the conditions that we observed and some common themes at all of the Oshkosh Fire Department stations. Energy inefficiency of the building envelope is one of the biggest challenges in terms of aging infrastructure. There are other ones that I'll touch upon, but understanding that the cost to operate these facilities and inefficient, non-sustainable facilities is a challenge that we wanted to bring forward to explain that from an energy conservation standpoint, these buildings are being challenged. There are some interior finishes that are of light commercial or residential in nature and they show their wear. Like I mentioned, these buildings are 24/7/365. So imagine someone being in your house, cooking three meals a day for every day for 30 years. It puts its wear and tear on a lot of the equipment. Some of the roof systems are in need of replacement in the near term. We also observed that there was a couple of stations that had some recent re-roofing work done. We've got some deteriorating basically mortar joints that will need some tough pointing, some asphalt concrete replacement, and some corrosion to some of the exterior materials is evident and needs some attention in the near future as well. And when we get farther along in the presentation, I'll explain how we prioritized each of those needs so that not everything was, you know, hitting the books all at one time. When we talk about physical space constraints, I mentioned aging infrastructure, but we're also talking about some physical space constraints. As you can well imagine, these buildings were either built for fire stations or retrofitted from other types of buildings, i.e. Station 16, to serve as fire stations. And as you can well imagine, with the evolution of fire service, the size of the equipment getting larger, different things in terms of best practices being adopted, and quite frankly, policies being adopted, buildings really don't fit their intended use in a number of locations. And I'll point out, highlight some of the deficiencies in some of the facilities. Vehicles and equipment are parked either outside or off-site. There's limited expansion on the current sites at Station 15, which is right down the street here, 16, which is the one under the water tower, and then 17, which has a cemetery directly adjacent to it, so there's no room on site for expansion. There's some response access concerns too from the stations, getting out in traffic, coming back from calls in traffic, maneuvering vehicles with spotters at Stations 15, 16, and 17. And then there's the health and safety concerns. What we do is we usually benchmark against NFPA standards when it comes to the safety and health of the firefighters. And so NFPA 1710 looks at minimizing response time. There's some challenges with that at a number of the stations just because of the way some of the equipment is parked in the buildings, or that like I mentioned, challenges of getting out onto traffic, those types of things.
What is the NFPA?
National Fire Protection Association.
Thank you.
I should have let you answer that one, I'm sorry.
That's the one.
You want to expound on what they do?
Okay. All right, thank you.
They write standards that these guys usually pay attention to because they typically are life safety concerns if they're violated. So anyway, so 15 and 81, 1500 and 1851 are carcinogen mitigation, and that has everything to do with decontaminating when you're coming back into the station, not commingling dirty turnout gear in the living quarters, also capturing a lot of the vehicle exhaust from the diesel engines that idle inside the station. And then there's 1500, that's the physical and mental well-being of the staff in the fire stations, having enough space to decompress, looking at certain things like communal bunk rooms that contribute to sleep deprivation, those types of things are covered under that NFPA 15. And the goal is that if you're going to build a new standard fire station that's adopting a lot of these standards, you're going to want to mitigate a number of these and eliminate some of the challenges and dangers associated with this with the firefighters. The other thing that we're noticing more and more is there are no accommodations for changing workforce. And Oshkosh is no different than all the other fire stations that we work in. You're getting more female firefighters, gender neutrality is a big issue in these fire stations. So we want to make sure that we're accommodating all users, whether it's people that live in the station, or it's the general public that might come in and use a community room or a polling station or any of that. We've got to make sure we've got access for all of these stations. And there are a number of stumbling blocks in the flagship of the Oshkosh fire stations that don't meet those standards, and we need to make sure that any construction or renovation bring them up to those standards. There's really no areas for staff to decompress. I can share with you that, you know, back in the day, this communal living was part of the camaraderie of living in the fire service industry. So bunk rooms were all open, showers were gang showers, living quarters, day rooms were as many people as you could pack in there. And now we learn that firefighters need some time to get some rest. They're living with these people day in and day out, just like you with your family at home, sometimes you need to retreat to the man cave, right? Well, in, I'll say all of the stations that I can think of off the top of my head, there are no accommodations for that. Everything is open, it's an open plan, open work plan. So then, in order for us to properly plan the size and location of these stations and the functions that need to be operated out of them, we needed to take a deeper dive and understand what planned residential, commercial, and industrial development looked like in the city of Oshkosh. So we met with Kelly and her team, and we learned about what projections look like. And so not only do the fire services use heat maps, but Kelly and her team use heat maps as well to identify where growth patterns are. So if you see the hot spots, the orange spots on the map that sort of blossom out to green, it's those orange spots where you're talking about the highest concentration of something, whether that's a fire call or whether that is a new development popping up. So to just recap what this map is telling us is that between 2022 and 2040, there's predictions that were made with the city of Oshkosh's comprehensive plan. So that was our guidepost, that's the document and the information we use to determine our recommendations for the fire service. So there's 483 residential units planned in the response area for Stations 15 and 17. We're sitting in the response area for Stations 15 and 17. There's going to be 483 residential units planned there. 1968 residential units planned in the response area of 16, that's the far west side over near Algoma. Growth to the north of the city is planned for 847 units that would contribute to the call volume of Station 19, the northernmost fire station in the flagship. Oshkosh is projected to see a 10% increase in population over the next 20 years. And what does that mean? Well, it's anticipated that they will annex approximately 2,400 acres of new land. In 16 years, there'll be 7,300 acres that will be developed for, or a need to develop 7,300 acres for residential, and 60 acres for commercial development. That's 1,800 acres also for industrial purposes. So you're talking about a lot more users being introduced to the response areas for these stations, and quite frankly, if they were to pop up tomorrow, these stations wouldn't be ready to accommodate that growth. They would have to add additional equipment and personnel that just cannot be accommodated in the stations. So with that long-term look at where growth is going, the next step was to discuss Station 14. Station 14 is a unique, I'll call it a unicorn, because it's owned by the county, Winnebago County, but it is staffed by the city of Oshkosh Fire Department. And so when we talk about needs to that, really, the conversation needed to revolve around the Operations Director for the airport, Director Skell and Deputy Director Hallock, to let them understand what we're observing in their facilities and have them understand what the potential shortcomings can be for that building. That building, again, as I mentioned, it's a unicorn, and we never build the church for Christmas and Easter, but I can tell you that when E A A comes to town, that facility is overstressed. It's overstaffed, it sees a lot of call volume because of the activities of the E A A, but it also has to protect structure and life off the airfield. And so the conversation we had with E A A is it's an aging facility, they park a lot of equipment there. You can see on the bottom that striker, that quote-unquote "fire truck," like three times the size of a normal fire truck, right? And if you pack two or three of those in there, you barely have room for an ambulance or a residential fire engine to operate out of that station. So bringing that to their attention and having them understand that, you know, the city of Oshkosh is a shared partner here, and there are some shortcomings in terms of how they prep for E A A and how they respond at E A A that could be helped by renovating or quite frankly, replacing Station 14. So we discussed the probability of what that replacement might look like and what the timing might look like, and then we explained that the next steps based on this report finding will determine how the county addresses some of the concerns that we're identifying in our study. So I want to talk a little bit about Station 16. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on that station than really any of the others because it's the station that needs the most help. It was not designed as a fire station, it was a pre-engineered metal building that was converted to a fire station in hopes that it would be a temporary fix. So the challenges that we have in space constraints is the equipment size and the building limitations that present basically literally physical hazards. You can see how closely that ambulance is parked to the back of that overhead door. There isn't room for someone to squeeze between there, nor should they try to. There's limited expansion on this site. As you're well aware, there's a big water tower to the southwest on that site, which also presents some challenges when some of the ice starts falling from the water tower onto the roof of the metal building when it's occupied by firefighters.
And I can attest, that's not just a fire station tale. My first tour of Station 16 was in January of 2009. It was January thaw, and I thought a cannonball had hit the top of the fire station. It's very real, it's too close to the water tower, and snow slides off and ice comes crashing down onto the roof of Station 16. So I'll vouch for you guys on that one. That's not just a tale.
Well, there's no tales being told here, this is all factual information.
But the look of surprise was on there, "Seriously?" It was like, "Yeah, seriously." It's a real, it's a real issue.
Sounds like we need to do something to the fire or the water tower to prevent freezing? I don't know.
That's why there's space around every other water tower. So I take it the tower over here, you don't want the station to be located under there either. Wouldn't be your first try, you know, just a guess. I'm sorry, Trevor.
No, no, thanks for the editorial, because they're probably thinking the consultants here.
Color commentary, just color commentary.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, building envelope efficiency, this building has its challenges with thermal efficiency. You can see the spray foam insulation and the rigid insulation that's tucked between the cracks and crevices to try to keep the giraffes out of the building. This building would not pass the thermal envelope performance code set forth by the state of Wisconsin if it were built, well, probably within the last 15 years, but most recently with the changes in the last year to that requirement. It's woefully inefficient and it creates challenges for the creature comfort and the people that actually have to live in it. And most of those envelope components can't be corrected without almost complete replacement. You'd essentially have to unscrew the metal roof panels to be able to put more insulation on the roof. You'd have to completely replace the windows and doors. So it, you know, it's really a heavy lift to get this to comply. It also has its space challenges, as I mentioned, but most, I guess, one of the things that really surprised me more than the snow falling off the roof and hitting the roof is the report writing area that's tucked into the closet that you can see in the lower left. This is where people have to conduct administrative tasks, report writing when they come home from, back from calls and so forth. It's not conducive to a lot of the administrative tasks that are the responsibility of those firefighters. On the health and safety concern side, when we talked about NFPA 1710, again, shuffling vehicles, traffic delays, if you've traveled that route in the proximity of those roundabouts, you'll understand the challenges of getting in and out over there in heavy traffic. These guys are taking off with the lights flashing and not getting a lot of response from courteous motorists, so they're putting themselves in harm's way. So in terms of the carcinogen mitigation, again, there's no hot, warm, and cold zone separation. In fact, there isn't separation on the laundry side between the domestic laundry and the gear laundry. They take their gear off-site to launder it, but there's always the chance for commingling of those garments, and there is no way to extract those carcinogens out of the clothing. And so sometimes it commingles with duty wear and some of the towels and some of the linens, which isn't a good setup. In terms of physical and mental well-being at this particular station, there is no separation for decompression, and as you can see, the workout facility up on the mezzanine that shares its space with a mechanical room is not conducive to an efficient, effective workout space. We mentioned the ice fall hazards, responding vehicles into four-lane traffic not being ideal, and then again, I mentioned commingling that domestic and PPE laundry facility. There are no accommodations for changing workforce in this station either, no gender-specific facilities. They do their best, as you can see in the lower left-hand corner, to separate some of the bunk room commingling. They're not sleeping in beds directly adjacent to each other without any type of separation, but there is no privacy separation. As we went through the pandemic, obviously, you know, infection is a challenge when you are open air and sharing air systems in some of these rooms, the mechanical systems and so forth. There's a lack of ADA accessibility, there's substandard building conditions that contribute to, quite frankly, recruitment and retention issues. And I'm sure the chief could expand on that, but what we've learned in the short bit of time that we've worked with this department is it doesn't contain some of the diversity, and we've learned of a lot of the challenges that they face in hiring that we see being mitigated when we design new facilities that are brought up to be inclusive for all. Bunk room arrangements, as I mentioned, aren't gender neutral, and they contribute to sleep deprivation. That's a common theme that we hear in a lot of stations. As you can well imagine, you're up for the call multiple times during the night, sleep is important. If you can't get back to sleep because someone in the same room is snoring, now you've deprived yourself of almost an entire night's sleep. And with two-day-on schedules, there may be a couple days in a row where you don't get sleep.
Just, I guess, kind of going back to the heat mapping, did the heat mapping take into account population served? Obviously, we're talking about distance and response time, but I'm just curious how many people that compares to when we were talking about some of the other stations?
Yeah, so there's two levels of heat mapping, as I mentioned. There's a community development and then the fire heat mapping. The community development heat mapping was provided to us, and when we get a few slides in, I'll explain what the dots on the fire heat maps represent. But basically, it's a study of 10 years of calls, of fire and EMS calls, in the areas that these specific departments respond to. And in terms of the population that each of the stations respond to, I don't have that number off my head, but if I had to guess, I would say the most populous, right, would be 15?
15, 17.
So as we spread out further and further, you're saying this is more historical data, but as we spread out further and further, fewer people are served and response times are increased because of the 16 in the area that it's in?
Exactly, that is correct, yep. And, that's the great prelude into the next slide, which is our heat mapping exercise. So the red line boundary that you see is the Oshkosh Fire Department's response area. So that's all the areas they're responsible to, addresses on an Oshkosh fire call, not a mutual aid call, but specifically for the city of Oshkosh Fire Department. That's where they have to go to. And what's, yes, I'm sorry, thanks for the correction. That's just the Station 16 response area, because that is the area that we needed to study in terms of a relocation possibly for that. And when we get to the heat map, which is this document right here, we see where there's a couple of things layered into this map. And so all the black dots are the response calls that they've responded to in the fire and EMS over the course of the last 10 years. The green shading, the lighter the green is, the shorter the response time from the actual station. And so the dark green will get you out six or eight minutes, where the light green is zero to two minutes of response time. So what we're looking for in these maps is, one, the collection of dots, and you can tell by the concentration where most of the dots are, that tells you that there's something significant there, and it's usually either an elderly housing facility, it could be a high-risk area within the community, it could be an older area, it could be areas not protected by automatic fire protection. There's a number of different categories that those responses, dots fall under, but basically, it tells us that if we're going to relocate a station, we got to be careful not to go too far to the west or to the east into the dark green areas, or that map will flip and the light green areas will change to longer response areas, response times, and that's where the majority of the calls are located. This map was developed so that when we had our conversation with Algoma, you can also see that just outside of Algoma, in the white areas, there are dots on the map, and those are mutual aid responses where EMS calls are responded to by the city of Oshkosh Fire Department and EMS. So all of that brings us to some conclusions here, and basically, what we're trying to do is understand what the order is in order to prepare the facilities for improvements and get ready for what is going to be the first phase of, I'll say, improvements for the Oshkosh Fire Department, and that is converting a armory building to a training center and E O C. That's first on the docket, it's in the, it's in the capital improvement plan, I believe, for 2023, and correct me if I'm wrong on that. It's in the C I P for 2023. We know that we need to work closely with Winnebago County on a timeline for Station 14 replacements. Station 14 is in about the same physical condition as 16. I showed you a lot of the shortcomings there. There really isn't a good Band-Aid approach to get, you know, another 10 or 20 years out of that structure. The plan for the relocation and construction of 16 has to be built into the matrix as well as expansion of Station 15, which is again, in that higher-density area here downtown, and then plan for improvements to Stations 17 through 19 to get 20-year life expectancy out of those three stations. We basically followed the mantra that the city likes to get 50 years out of a fire station building. And so what do we do to those three, we call them the triplet stations because they're all identical, they're just in three different areas in the city, they're all approximately the same age within a couple of years of each other. What do we need to do to those stations to provide the NFPA suggested improvements to those stations and still get another 20 years out of them? And so the report takes a deeper dive on what that might look like. So to do that, then, you know, with six stations, we really have to create a pecking order, if you will, and understand what timing looks like and what the costs are associated with those. So we created a red, yellow, and green matrix here of highest importance to, I'll say, lowest and worst. say, lowest importance over time, and we organized those improvements. So based on report findings and recommendations, it has, obviously, the training and EOC work to start, and then it moves into a replacement for Station 16, which would include some type of land acquisition proposition for that. And then it looks at land acquisitions for Station 15, and then it moves down to land acquisition for 17, because that is a landlocked station that's adjacent to a current cemetery. And then it just walks you through the yellow and the green opportunities of where we need to be over the course of the next, well, basically 20 years, to get 20 years of life out of 17, 18, and 19. And then that created a spending schedule that we shared with the finance director in terms of what expectations are set in terms of capital outlay over the course of the next, well, in the near term, the midterm, and the long term. And this is just a larger image of that, so you can better read some of the text up there. I know there's a lot of stuff going on and a lot of moving parts to that, but there is a method to that madness, and it's based on need. It's based on growth projections, and it's based on understanding, as I mentioned in that opening slide, that the fire department isn't the only need in the City of Oshkosh. So there's some pause buttons along this schedule that can be hit, but in terms of some of the bigger needs in, like, Station 14, which is out of Gamy Counties, and 16 really needs some attention in the short term. So that is the culmination of our findings and recommendations. I will open it up for any questions, or Chief, or Chief, if you've got anything else to add based on what we completed as part of our study. I'll turn
On the slide with the GIS response mapping, would it be possible to find out, like, how many square miles that covers and what the population served is in that? And then the following slide, I guess I'm a little bit confused. So if you look at the previous slide, in the Station 16 response area, and then when we look at the Oshkosh Station 16 calls and drive-time map on the next one, it seems to go over into 17. So I guess I'm a little bit confused. Does Station 16 respond to Station 17's area? Because it looks like some of those dark green areas are up around Station 17?
Yeah. Chiefs, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is, the dots you see are the 10-year retrospective look at the incidents. So to answer your question, Mayor, does 16 sometimes respond to the 17's area? Certainly, one reason for that could be if Station 17 is on another call.
Right.
They will backfill that, or if it's an incident that requires multiple units, like construction fire.
Okay.
Multi-car accidents. You know, so it's showing where they have responded to historically. So if, for example, if we saw, you know, a huge concentration of 16's dots in 17's area, the conclusion would most likely be another unit in Station 17. So they are going to move around, or another outlier or occurrence would be they're coming back from training from getting fuel, another call, and the call happen table right here. We'll take it for some reports that you need. So all of those reasons could contribute to why there's some dots outside that mission.
Okay. And the other question was on the prior slide. If we could find out how many square miles that serves and what the population is. I don't know if we have any of that already put together in comparison to, like, 17 or 15, just for...
Sure. We should be able to figure that out.
Do you talk a little bit about, I think, was it last year or the year before, some of the, I know we approved some things with the training center, I think the tower, maybe? Could you just give an update on kind of where that's at?
Yes, we completed some time ago the first phase, developing the concrete pad and so it was just asphalt and a road base out there. So we put a concrete pad, installed a training tower, and also did some landscaping improvements around the perimeter, and did some privacy fencing around the perimeter around the National Sawyer Side, at the request of the planning commission from input from the neighbors. So that, the fencing improvements, the landscaping, the concrete pad, and the train tower, all completed, and have been a huge benefit to us. And now we're ready to move on to the next phase of continuing repurposing the rest of that footprint.
So on the last page, it's sort of the follow-up to that. Trevor didn't put in the amount for the alternate locations for materials stored in the current armory building. Police, museum, city clerk, as well as just general services, they currently have a lot of materials and supplies. Did I mention museum, too? So, yeah, so we have to find an alternate location to relocate them. And even though Trevor didn't put the amount in, we've been, that's as part of our overall facility study, identifying those facilities as well. The biggest one will be the location of the relocation of the police. That's where the, the Sea Cove is stored and things like that. So having an alternate location for that. We've identified that on Third Street, near the Public Works Garage. So we've got the location, but the building would have to be built in. That's, for the next presentation you get later on, that's included in there. So even though Trevor didn't identify that, we work together to make sure that that number is out there. Because that, the conversion of the Sawyer Street location can't happen, and I've kept telling, you don't have a training center until you relocate your other family. And that's just part of what has to get done.
The dollars that are sold there for the identification and purchase, purchasing of land for 16A, 15A, and 17A are estimated at $750,000 each. What is that based on? Purely land acquisition, or are there other? How did you arrive at those estimates?
The land cost estimates were derived by using current market data that was passed to us from community development, but it also does have some wiggle room in there for site improvements. So if it's a greenfield site that doesn't have utilities run in, for example, it's a marker that's out there to make sure that, I'll call it worst-case scenario, because you're looking at, you know, if you're going to relocate a station, like 16, you would need a minimum likely of at least two acres of land.
Okay.
Two to 2.4 acres would be ideal. And, you know, we talked earlier about unicorns. 2.4 acres on that side of town is that unicorn.
Oh, yeah. I know.
Yeah. And so you don't know what, you know, if you will get improved land that needs some demolition, those types of things. So it is a conservative marker that's out there as sort of a worst-case scenario.
Thank you. So in the orange, what are we at, about 13 million?
Yeah, and as later on, when we have our discussion about the overall facilities, these have been put into the overall facility analysis. So all those, all these numbers have been transferred in. Again, they're still represented in 2022 numbers. We did ask departments to update those, but these are current because that's the most current data that we have. So that's if we built them today. But, you know, something like 15D, construct new station, seven to 10 years, I guarantee you that that 8888 will naturally go up, and we'll keep tracking that as time goes on.
Well, I know when I took my first tour as a first-time council member in 2016, Station 15, the living quarters were woefully inadequate even then, and I'm sure it hasn't improved since then. But they make some really good chili over there, I would say. All right.
That's pretty much preparing you for our next session.
As the appetizer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But obviously, that was a big part that was missing from the overall facility study. And this is the one, you didn't even get into the 24/7, but the issue is that, you know, unlike, I was talking to, I was talking to Joe Furlo at the Grand. Unlike the Grand, the Grand doesn't have to relocate where it is every 20 years. Every 20, 30 years, these guys have to look at it and say, are we in the right spot? We know we'll always, for example, we're always going to need a fire station on the east side of the tracks. We just, we just know that. So that's got to get factored in. That's, that has nothing to do with either density, either population or call density, but, you know, when there's a train, we got to have a response unit available. So it's all those other factors. And obviously, 41 is, is one of those other factors. It's not as significant as a railroad track, but if you've watched a, if you watched a vehicle get out of Station 16, it seems like it takes forever.
Yeah.
For it to get across four roundabouts to hit east of Highway 41. And it's just like, why is it going so slow? Well, it's, these guys don't go 60 miles an hour. This isn't television. They, they got to go through the roundabouts the same way everybody else goes through the roundabouts, and it just seems painfully slow, but they just, that's just what they do. But it's good information.
I guess my only other question would be, so, you know, in past years, when council has reviewed, you know, our TIF districts, our TIDS, and when we talk about fiscal impact or impact with services, it doesn't seem like we are overly mindful of that. And I guess as far as growth and when we're looking at the service and the projected impact, it seems like we could maybe reference some of this kind of material, especially those maps. Those are really helpful. So good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Changed my mind.
Now let's go.
Fun to fire.
Now we got to cool off because we got 12 minutes before we get back at it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Members.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Trevor.
I brought my...